I remember my mama telling me, Dad, no matter what you become in life, no matter how far you go in life, to always remain humble and be authentic. Stay true to yourself, stay true to what you do. Show love. Since I leveled up on them, they say I lost the spirit. If that's the case, why I'm still going hard with it? I get it. Most of y'all still haven't graduated. From that state of mind is why it's hard to grasp what I be saying. I understand how y'all should must have felt hated by many when all he did was try to be a hell serving healing, showing people how to elevate to the highest self. And even after all that, they still put that man to death. That that opened up my eyes a lot with all the stuff I talk about. Y'all will take me out. It be the ones closest to you that you have to watch. They sit and plot hoping one day they can take your spot. I been counseled by many due to the truth I be spitting. There's so much life in these lyrics. Although your flesh don't receive it, your spirit love what is here. And the most I gave me the clearance to use the power with them and to put my people from ditches. Thanks to these elders and deacons who egos got them all tripping between them and those Christians. Tell me where is the difference? They talk so bad about the world, but worse than those who live in it. They are not in the true, they just uphold in the image. Are you focused on healing or are you checking for fringes? Do you care about the people or the money they giving you? And your church is ridiculous. I'm just trying to make sense of it like the knowledge I hold. Tell me why it's so limited? Y'all boxing the people in? I'm getting so sick of it. I know if I feel this way the most I gotta be.
Hide the money, y'all. There's poor people around. What's your broke ass? Hide the money, y'all. There's poor people around. What's your broke ass?
Leader, they want to hear from the mayor. If y'all ain't learnt that yet, the mayor, not the trustees that don't do nothing, that only run they mouth. Y'all don't do no work, no work.
Guys, this is Super Mayor Tiffany A. Hinger, the people's mayor. So you guys doing a lot of snitching and y'all went and got my site shut.
And investigating.
Now, all you crackheads, out.
Every election. So now because they can't beat me, they gotta do this smear campaign to convince public opinion that I'm bad for them.
Should we say two elections? You were first elected in 2021?
No, 2013 was my first election for trustee. I was a trustee. I set where they are. That's why I know the law.
Council, elected mayor 2021.
Yes.
Terms, four years?
Yes.
Okay, plans of running for reelection?
I'm running for both my seats and I'm gonna win them.
So and when is the election for Thornton Township?
2025.
So those elections are the same time?
They are.
Bullshit, bullshit, bullshit.
I could not be here breathing and be comfortable if I was really as bad as they was making it. You know, nobody could be around me. So for me to be this calm, I must have some kind of inner peace. And my inner peace is knowing that once everybody take the time to really see what type of person I am, you'd be surprised that I stuck around this long. I have to make the life that I do live as happy as I can and try to do the best with what I have. You know, live the best life I can live, be as happy as I can be. Nothing is perfect for anybody.
Boys, I swear, I think I figured it out. You know why they don't want us redneck brothers and sisters and the hood brothers and sisters getting along? You know why? Because we be unstoppable. I'm telling you right now, we would shut shit down.
Already know we'll shut shit down. Blessings, blessings. Welcome to Uncensored Enlightenment Talk. I missed you guys. I've been low, 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 low on these YouTube streams. Welcome, welcome. Today we're going to be tuning into the Thornton Board of Trustees meeting. It will be starting in a half an hour. So you know what we do. We're gonna do a little deep dive. I'm gonna give it all to you. I want to try to give you a pre and a post. We're gonna chop it up in the beginning, just talk about a few things. And then I wanted to do a part two, but I think I'm just gonna run it. Okay, I did a full breakdown of Hinger's, how can I say, real estate history? And we're gonna break it down for you. So if you got the time and the energy, we're gonna do it all tonight. And then we're gonna break it down in segments. So if you're not gonna be able to tune in for it all, it's okay. It's okay. I'm here for it. But we're gonna start with the update. Okay, because we're gonna be tuning into Thornton Township meeting. You know what I do? We're gonna bring the receipts, we're gonna bring the receipts. So you know, I be asking a lot of questions. You know, what's going on around here as far as contracts? Money that is spent? So this is the answer to my Freedom of Information request from Thornton Township. Now you can actually go onto the Thornton Township website and see this yourself because they have it transparent. So this particular Freedom of Information request was related to Cozy Corner, dun, 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 Waltz Food Center and Jimbo's Restaurant. Okay, and catering. Now, we already know that they, Jimbo's got pulled off the roster for some apparent reason. I, I do believe it's the double invoice that we showed you a couple of weeks ago. So as you saw earlier in the last Thornton meeting, they petitioned to get him permanently removed. So I believe that's the issue. But my question here was, this is a formal request to receive contract information related to Waltz Food Center, Jimbo's Restaurant and Catering, and Cozy Corner Deli and Catering. I would like to thank you in advance for your time and attention to this matter. So this was their reply according, after conducting a thorough search of its records, the township has determined that it does not have any public records in its possession responsive to my request. So I would assume that means that they don't have contracts for these three entities. And I thought that was standard practice when it comes to making bids. I thought that Thornton Township was a little bit better than that, highlighting that, I believe I heard Waltz Food, they've been catering for Thornton Township for a while and other entities. Okay, so I was like, okay. Yeah, this is something we need to look into because if they don't have a formal contract with Thornton, that means they don't have a formal budget for that particular vendor. You know what I'm saying? That's what should be in there, should be a budget. You see what I'm saying? And it should be agreed upon with all of the board members and the residents. So I wanted to show you that, that that was just something that we had got back. We also gonna be getting into the cell block three. Not tonight, but we did get our response from all the entities when it comes to, let me put myself back on the screen. When it comes to Darius Wilson, the Illinois State Police actually gave me their little short findings. I don't think that was the full report, but they gave me something to work with. And I also got my response from Dalton in regards to that investigation. If y'all don't know who Darius Wilson is, that is cell block three. That's what we call it allegedly. That's where people become unalive in Dalton Police Station. So we're gonna go into that most likely this weekend. I have everything that I need for that and a few other things. Okay, so let's deep dive. What's going on? Please hit the like button, guys. Thank you for being here. I'm grateful for you guys. Now, this was something that I was made aware of to, for my favor fade. A little frustrated because residents are getting frustrated at this point because this whole experience was an eye opening experience for everybody and they're not with it anymore. There's no more games being played. They're tired of people having multi-seats. They're tired of people having big income and people still, still broke. Us regular people still striving and pushing, you know, being treated like nothing. But anyway, 2015 voters, God, this is Bloomberg Township. Hold on. So I was made aware of this. This is a little bit of talk of the street supervisor clerk trustees assessor highway commission. This is, hold on one second. Let me just make sure. Hold on one second, one second, one second. Let me make sure I got the right one up. Hold on one second, y'all. PC on the street. Hold on one second. It's not it. Okay, you see how it did me? You see how it did me? This was, it went to another article. Okay, shout out to the Lansing Journal. This is Local Voice, a crossroad in Dalton. This was March 23rd, 2025, submitted by Marquita Sewer. Sewer, I hope I'm saying it right, Dalton resident. My fellow citizen, today we find ourselves in a crossroads in Dalton where the voices of our community are ringing louder than ever. The recent decision by the Dalton West Elementary School District Board to approve a staggering raise for the superintendent Kevin J. Noteley, bringing his total compensation to a jaw dropping $480,000, raising profound question about our values and priorities as a community. On the school board budget, yeah, all that money to spend and y'all ain't spending it on the students. And that's not just there. It's all over. Okay, while our children struggle within the walls of underperforming schools, our leadership have chosen to reward a single individual with a raise that many in our community deem unjustified. This decision made in the face of public outcry reflects the troubling disconnect between those in power and the very people they serve. We, as we look to our future, we must ask ourselves, is this the legacy we want to build? A legacy where fiscal responsibility taking a backseat to exorbitant salaries? The legacy where the voice of parents and property owners are drowned out by mechanisms of a few, mechan- mechanisms of a few? Let us be clear, our school must be placed, place of opportunity, innovation and growth, not just for selective few, but every child who walks through those doors. It's time for us to demand accountability, transparency as a commitment to excellence that extends beyond the boardroom. Yeah, because a lot of people walking around looking pretty. They looking pretty, but us, I'm gonna say us, the people is still struggling. I agree with you. This is well wrote. I definitely like her sentiments. We must come together as a community to ensure that the money allocated to our children's education is spent wisely and justly. Let us stay united in the belief that every child deserves an equality education. Equity education. And that starts with leaders who are truly committed to their success. In the spirit of our democracy, let us raise our voice, challenging the status quo and working hand in hand to build a brighter future for Dalton. One, where our children can thrive and where our leaders are held accountable to the people they serve. So shout out to you, Ms. Marquita. You did a great job. Sorry if I chopped it up just a little bit. You did an amazing job and that's my sentiments exactly. Hold them to the fire. These things should not be happening and they like, oh, show up to the meeting, show up to the meeting. It's hard for everybody to show up to the meeting. You guys should have some common sense, those leaders in those position, to not even want, feel comfortable awarding yourself that, those type of salaries, knowing what's going on in the school. Where is the priority? Where is the people, where is their priorities? And that's all reflecting on how that person behaves. And we're gonna get to that because they're in the uproar about other things as well. We just been scrolling, you know, keeping, seeing what's going on. This is the next thing. Okay, and this is what we were talking about before. You know, they said they want to bring this, what is it? Did I say hydrogen collider? What type of factory do they want to bring in Dalton? If y'all remember, I know it deals with like electricity. And I'm thinking about, I don't know why I say hydrogen collider, but whatever it is, the residents want to make sure that it's not gonna be gone in a year or two. That, you know, as, as we say, that you guys are gonna be able to obtain the jobs. And if they have specialty jobs, are they gonna educate you in those specialty jobs? So here, this was a glass factory that was in Dalton and they said that it's getting shut down. The factory has shut down on Cottage Grove today. The workers are not too sure how many days are left. They were given a notice at the beginning of February that the factory will be closing in about 90 days or so for glass, a cabinet. And now, Andre's Crew. So that's the name of the company, R. Drecks, Drecks. I'm saying them wrong. Please put the pronunciation in the chat for me, guys. But this is a glass factory that's being shut down. You see what I'm saying? Probably an employer of many residents of Dalton. This is the columnist, another tough challenge for Mr. Jason House and the Board of Trustees. May the Lord see them through. Okay, so things are still happening out there. We gotta keep our eye on that. So when it comes to big corporations coming into Dalton, you want to make sure that it's gonna, one, be beneficial for the residents, but two, actually sustain its life. So it's about the market as well and putting the right type of business in the right environment. Okay. Oh, as I say that, I'm gonna just do a quick announcement, guys. Let me put this on the screen real quick. If you guys will like, I know that a lot of you guys are not up here, but it'll be okay. Hold on one second. Hit the like button. Ye, my thing keep cutting off on me. I wanted to show you guys, I've been pretty busy. But if you guys are in the Atlanta area, feel free to come out. Let me make sure I got it. Feel free to come out. Y'all could get to see Lady Lashley, not Grace Leiva, but Lady Lashley in action. I don't only support Dalton, I support my community. So I've been working on an economic series for new investors and also for community leaders. So I just finished the six-part series for community leaders and I have a five-part series for new beginners that want to know about what's assets, how you can budget and save, how you can look at your current situation versus the economy. So it's like a five-part series. I'm gonna have that, this particular, well, I'm gonna make another ad for it and I'm gonna put it on our community page. But just know Grace Leiva is not just working for Dalton and Thornton, and Thornton. And Alexis, I'm here, I want to put in the work for my community. As I tell you guys, you don't only have to vote, okay? You can do other things because that is against my nationality. I do find other things to give back to my community. So this series is gonna be taking place in Fulton County Library. Okay, and I am connected to all, I think it's like 14, 15 libraries. So over the six months or so, we're gonna be here, all the libraries. So if you in Georgia, check Lady Lashley out. That's one of the things we're gonna do and we're gonna put in other stuff because we gotta keep educating, educating, because we gotta create our own dog. I'm not just throwing stuff out there for y'all. I'm over here beating the streets, trying to beat the streets over here as well. So please hit the like button. I want to thank everybody who actually been supporting me and becoming part of the membership. And as I want to remind you guys, I don't have any content directly for the membership section yet. But what I'm gonna do with the money is use that money to get more resources so I can bring out more cases on this platform and also contribute to Alexis and what mom is doing, what Ms. Carver is doing. Because y'all know I'm gonna keep on pushing. They gonna keep seeing me. Now, while we talk about job creation and economy, now this was something that I saw. I was like, ooh, cuckoo, cuckoo bees. They got something going on down there where they doing a little youth employment. So I'm like, all right, that's cool. This was shared by Ms. Brittany. So I said, let me, let me be nosy. I said, okay, is this Dalton, Dalton turning it up? Y'all got, you know, y'all got the inmate, inmate espungement thing going on. Now y'all got the youth employment. Let's see what this is about. You know what I'm saying? Let's see what this is about. Then, excuse me, I happened to go to the website with my nosy ass and I'm like, wait a minute, what is this? All right, so I believe that this youth program is connected to Cook County. So I was like, okay, because it was like, I had to go to the About Us page. Like what the, what the hell going on around here? But, okay, so I'm seeing kind of the connection from the gentleman who was at the meeting last week that was talking about a program and that's something that I want to go into to, you know, because I didn't get a chance to revisit it, but I do have the clip up if we have enough time. We got like 15 more minutes and we're gonna be jumping on somebody live. I'm just playing. You know what they do. I love you guys. Thank you for the people who let me actually use your screen stream for the Thornton meeting. I got my eye on it, y'all. So y'all got nothing to worry about. But what this goes to say, I was like, okay, cool bees. Is this, what is this? So they have a job fair coming up and this job fair is, what the hell? Did we miss it? Damn it. Oh, it's April. All right, and this is in Harvey, Illinois. So it looks like, I'm gonna see if that program that they're talking about connects to this, but it looks like they're intertwining services, you know, that it may take place in some Thornton Township areas. So you guys be aware of that. Y'all could utilize these resources as well. But we do need the resources to be coming straight for Dalton residents as well. You know, directly because they have been suffering. This brings, you know, probably a whole lot of Cook County residents, which is not a problem. But Dalton residents in their cell needs to be focused on. The youth needs to be focused on, especially after allegedly having Kamal as the youth director. No damn way. Okay, ain't no way. Everything is on the up and up with that. Also, as I mentioned, it needs to be connection between the college age students, working class as well, because working class can't even get to the meetings because we be working so damn much. Like lady said, I just retired and I've been able to come to the meetings and now I got some things to say. You see what I'm saying? So you have to take that into consideration. But also because things are televised, people should be more, have more accessibility. So we gotta take, keep that in mind. Blessings, Ms. Sang, blessings, H. Bag, Williams. Thank you, blessings. And Mr. Milton, thank you, thank you for being here with me. I appreciate you guys. So this is the last thing I think I want to get to before we go jump into the meeting and see what's that, what's going on with that real quick. Starts in about, we still got like 15 minutes. Let me make sure. I know how, I actually see. Right. Yes, shout out to Ms. Nicole. We're gonna put her live on. It's supposed to be starting in about 15 minutes, but let's just get to it real quick so you guys didn't know that I'm on task. But y'all see what I have on the screen? The residents got a bone to pick, okay? They do, they got a bone to pick. Shout out to Ms. Nicole, we're gonna be using her live. I do see, I think I see reality. Well, here she go with her shoe shack. All right. Excuse me, y'all. I'm still fighting, I'm still fighting that cough, but I'm doing better. While she do her shoe shack, we going to get to one more thing. The residents are not really too far of what's going on when it comes to Thornton Township and the candidates. Well, one of the candidates, and I want to say that I've been knew this was coming because guess what? He still ain't show up nowhere. Now, he hasn't showed up, but Napoleon did have an event. Yep, I'm gonna talk, talk what I told. Because if I was a resident, I'd be saying the same thing. He had an event and that event was like $75 and like $35 for Dalton, I mean, Thornton residents to attend. Okay, and I really didn't appreciate that because I feel like it should be free, especially for the residents issue, show, show your face. Okay, so here we go. This is somebody that are kind of talking about Napoleon. We gonna hit this up a little bit. Nobody's really paying attention to the patterns. But this article was released on the same day that Tiffany got caught in a cookie jar. Napoleon and Tiffany are pretty much the same, laugh out loud crooks, allegedly. Now, people are feeling some way because Napoleon, now this is not new. This is old, I saw this already. And I, I did show this to my, one of my residents, favorite residents. She was combating me like he did this, he did that. I was like, okay, I know I can't say nothing bad about him right now, but I already know that he ain't gonna show up. Possibly the boule late. I said, don't be surprised if Nate come in there like swim with. They be liking him like swim there on a summer day. That's what's happening. So this was a small amount that they said that he spent about $6,000 on high-end department store clothing. I saw this article a while ago and I was like, whatever at this point. Because, you know, I have to wait till the tide is right to be able to say stuff because if I say it too early, I get blackballed. They like, ah, shit, fuck, talk about, ah. So you know, but the truth is the truth. They're seeing what it is. I call him the boule. Okay, that's what I call him, the boule. So yeah, I think it was something else they had to say about Napoleon. But let me just put the meeting on the screen while I do a little bit more of the hunting and I'll let y'all start watching what's going on. I'll let Ms. Nicole, hope she ain't doing no more shoe. I'm not, I'm into shoes, just not in this broadcast. Let's play this real quick while I look for a little bit more on Napoleon, what the people got to say.
Just got here. She's kind of behind that pole. Hey, Renita. Hey, cuz, Carolyn.
Hold on one second too, guys. Give me one second.
You know, I doubt he did. I mean, he should have paid for it, but I doubt he put one red cent on it.
I think Reality Check is there as well. I'mma check it out, y'all. He's there. We're gonna. I appreciate Ms. Nicole. I love Ms. Nicole, but you know, we can't have double broadcasters there. So I will be, I want to be going to Reality Check real quick. And if anything, if the screen doesn't look right, look at Reality Check TV. He better turn his screen. Look at that. I'mma be his butt. He don't even know. I guess we might go back to Ms. Nicole's and hear her talk. Oh, all right, we're gonna play a little bit of music. Shout out to Reality Check TV. I was like, what is going on? Actually, it was hitting the quad on us. It went to the side, y'all. I'm not music, I'm just gonna play some like, you know, feng shui music while I do my little hunting in the back. Hit the like button. I appreciate you guys for being here with Grace Leiva and all the content creators that's out there doing your thorn. That's not it. It's not too loud, y'all, right? That's a clear shot. He got a beautiful shot. I like that. Blessings. Oh, y'all want to go into the, basically, they're gonna be going into, let's go into the. I'm gonna read it to y'all. Blessing. Jamming, re-jamming. All right, I'mma read it to y'all what's gonna be happening. And I think it's, it's like a continuation of the last meeting. Please let me know if the music too loud. All right, so they're gonna, they do the roll call, Pledge of Allegiance, public comments is after the Pledge of Allegiance. They said they gonna get everybody out the way. They said they gonna get everybody out the way, get out the way. Um, approval of minutes for the March twentieth meeting, I know this is a meeting the other day. They be having me working here, approval of bills, the general fund, general assistant funds, and road and bridges. So let's see if it's any amendments that happen. Um, there's no old business. It doesn't look like it, resolutions, proclamation ordinance, none. New business request for proposal for IT service. Alright, y'all, now I'mma look at the budget, I got the budget up. But I, I did a lot of like research on um, Hinger, I had to do that deep dive into her property. So we can look at the budget as well tonight, I got time for it, okay? It's gonna be a busy week for me, so I said I wanted to hit everything today and I'mma split it up for you guys. We gonna hit it up, so, they're gonna go into the proposal for IT services. They, I pray that they have uh, a decent budget that is not out, you know, crazy. Cuz they spent a lot of money over the last couple of years on IT. Who owns a IT company? Who, who's in bed with a IT company? Can somebody verify this? Is Keith Freeman, doesn't he has like a IT company or something? What is it? It's something about IT computers and Keith Freeman. We gonna have to put that together, I'mma have to store that in my memory bank. But I know they ain't trying to fake Keith on this one, so the closed session again. I guess they look at this to discuss the hearing discipline, performance compensation dismissal of certain personnel. Legal counsel, acquisition of real estate property, matters pending, probable. Intimate litigation. Related to the employee or discipline, discipline of specific employees, why is this back out here again? I thought, I thought they um, took it off the agenda. So they're gonna go to the closed session again and talk about somebody possibly getting fired, that's the closed session. We could put it on the screen for you guys. It's weird. It's a little weird, let me um, I'mma take a quick picture of it. Oh, I also got, no I don't, I was looking for the case, they got a case that they gonna be trying to settle. And I believe this cases are related to like a vehicle, they over there partying. Look at them over there partying. Look at Miss Rob- Mr. Robert and Miss Roberts. They got a big ol' happy family, it's been a long ride. Let me see something. Wait, y'all saw, y'all saw Kamal snitching? Yeah, he's snitching. I feel like that intro was good, wasn't it, that was a good intro right there. Kamal was like, who's snitch, I'm telling, he told on his girlfriend, go into the check cashing place. Look, alright, so boom, Marvella Green and Thornton Township, so I was kinda looking, it's not under Pacer. But it does have something to do with automobile vehicle, automobile vehicle. And um, it's in Cook County, hold on one second. Just wanna see. Stop it. Yeah, it says, it got a category is under motor vehicle, non-jury tort, auto automobile. So I don't know what this, what it is, but if I can get more information, but it looks like they looking to settle the case anyway. Okay, now, the last time I had got settlement information, that was from Dalton. So maybe I can, you know, Thornton and see what they give me for settlement information for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-four. I know they sick of me, they like, she sent a new one and every week, when they, when they answer one, I send another one. But it's better for one person to ask than everybody, you know, I just asked and then I reported, you see what I'm saying? I'm a little sick, sick of me, but it's okay. Anyway, so we gonna see what that case about and later date, but this is what I was talking about, the closed session, why oh why? Why are they gonna be talking about that, but that's good if it's preventative, y'all remember what I told y'all? To, I do think Dalton and Thornton need to do things for preventative measures when it comes to um, legal issues. If they see an issue, they need to hit it before it gets bad. You know, fire that person, get them out of there. Alright, look at Melanie. From Lansing, I know these people name better than anybody. I've been doing good, y'all, the one thing I did good without here now is learning people names. I've been doing much better. And let's see, so that's the proof for the settlement and the other thing was possible action related to supervisor vehicle stifling. Which the supervisor had received for the duration of her term, yeah, I think, y'all, let me find out. Watch, y'all gonna, if I win, y'all gonna donate two dollars to me? Somebody about to lose their job, I think he about to lose his job, I don't know why, it's, it's weird. Yeah, they go again with this. They did, I thought they took it off last, on the twentieth. So, many people saying it's Keith Price, but Keith Price didn't get that, that stifling. That man did. So let's see, okay guys, I'mma hold y'all to it, if I'm right, I get two dollars. Two dollars donation, if I'm wrong, I do another better deep dive. They like, why is that, because it take me four, five hours to do research, okay? That's, that's. My, my charge an hour is way more than with YouTube pay, we talking shit, I just talking stuff, y'all. Let's see, I know we don't have enough time to listen to our Cook County man, cuz that's what I wanna listen to, I never listened to that guy. And I think they got um. I'm, I'm a mama. I'm a mama, I don't say always, but something be happening, yeah, I just have to dig sid- sidetrack. Why I always catch my kids and I catch people in the middle of doing stuff, even my patients, they be right about to do something, I be like. Gotcha, it just be the spirit, so, it ain't me. Kappa, I love you, thank you for being part of membership, I do say is God. Anytime, I always say that. Alright, we got two minutes, let's see what's this sounding like. Um, thank you for being here with us, hit the like button, I appreciate you guys. Y'all give me the energy to get through possibly after this meeting, cuz it seem like it's gonna be short. Hope somebody get fine, but I do think I got the energy to get to this super mayor, super realtor. Okay, we have about, I have about hmm. Twenty years of information, Tiffany Hinger's been in real estate for a minute, dog. Yeah, since two thousand and twenty compared to my records, okay? So I broke down all of the properties that she had, what happened with the properties, some of the questionable things. I even got her mama property, that one that they went to protest, we gonna show you that one. She still own properties, y'all, and I possibly have an idea of her next venture or a business venture that we don't know about. Shout out to Best of Us and Kappa, thank you to my Mads and H Fag, thank you for being here, appreciate you. Please hit the like button, let's turn up the volume and see what we got going on. Is everybody there, did, did we see um, Gonzalez coming in? Every time I see that girl, I think that's Gonzalez's daughter, who is that, y'all? Alright, Ms. Wells there. She said, I ain't gonna be in no bushes for nobody, but Ms. Wells have been around. Sometimes she there, sometimes she not. Hinger is not gonna show up. Where, where you think she at? Huh, where y'all think Hinger at, while I'm being nosy, I might as well go look, cuz I, I didn't look on her page. See what she got going on. Matter of fact, give me a second, I'm gonna have to take some of these things off of my um, screen. It's absolutely too much. Bear with me, y'all, it look like it's freezing a little bit. Yeah. Be still doing good, hit the like button, let me know what's going on, I'm taking some of this stuff off my screen. So I, oh, also, y'all, I've been noticing, people been paying attention to the school board. Oh, they been on that school board like it ain't no tomorrow, I know that's right. Cuz that is the majority of y'all tax money. Remember, um, we still have to do um, a compatibility. Like basically see what office is compatible. When it comes to Napoleon, I know they probably like it's cool, but I'mma look at everybody because these people got too many seats. For my liking, I'm just gonna be honest. We got a little bit too much going on. Alright, we'll see how that works out. Alright, let's get this meeting started, y'all. Shout out to Reality Check TV, he has a really clear, clear, clear picture. And I appreciate him for letting us use his live. Oh, my man is still there, y'all see the um, security guard? Oh my god, we, I was just, oh my goodness, how did I see that man? To my favorite fade, we was just talking about him. We thought that he stopped working and could start collecting disability, look at my man back there, you survived the fight, baby. Hey. Yes, please hit the like button, he survived the fight. I took that picture down of my um, thing, cuz every time I see, I start laughing at him. I ain't mean to, but they did him dirty. So I ain't scared of y'all. Do y'all see Gonzalez yet? Alright, Lord, you know we don't need that. I'm over here crossing my fingers, y'all, while I take some of these screens down. I wonder when it's gonna start, I hope they make an announcement. I appreciate you Kenneth, thank you so much, I'm gonna put your comment on the screen, thank you. Oh, did you guys see the debate? It was dry. It was really dry, I'm gonna read, I'mma look at it again, but I couldn't even keep watching it, I'm just telling y'all, I'm sorry. I, I couldn't do it, but um, I was trying to get to some of what Nate was saying, so hopefully it's some good parts. I'll put it up there for y'all, but baby, that was the driest debate I ever saw in my life. I ain't have enough energy for it, so shout out to everybody who was able to sit through that thing. Y'all let me know if y'all like what Nate said, cuz I could, I couldn't watch it. Next time Nate, Nate was up there asleep. At this point, Nate was falling asleep, oh lord. Didn't I tell y'all, the Republican guy was like the dry eye, the dry eye. Um, commercial plus yogi bear put together, I wasn't tripping, y'all watched him. Mix right on together and then put Nate to sleep. They asked if they wear his sneakers and his, his dress up clothes like. Oh my goodness. Next time. Oh, but allegedly they're supposed to be um. Hopefully, if I'm not talking too loud. It's supposed to be a debate that they trying to set up. And that debate is. Lansing, is it Lansing Journal? I, I should've sent it to myself, Lansing Ju- Journal, Journal um, wanna have a debate with they allegedly said, let me turn down the volume cuz they just talking, they allegedly said that the Democrats did not reply yet. And I could get the receipts, I remember that, how you can donate, my cash app is right at the bottom, S slash lays. Or you can be a monthly member for four ninety-nine and you can help me get, get into um. Get into one of these websites, I think it's called Trilla, Trilla. There's a few um, court case websites that I've won, at least one. It's like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month and I don't have it right now. I tell y'all, I ain't lying when I say I'm broke, but it's okay, God got me, I got enough to pay my bills. I'm volunteering all my life until God get me where I am, so thank you guys for helping me, for loving me. For not, you know, just being here for me, this is a, a big transition for me, if y'all don't know, you know, I, I walked away from the bedside. for me, if y'all don't know, you know, I, I walked away from the bedside in August of nursing, I've been a travel nurse for eleven years and I always been working on these websites, these platforms in my business, but it was like, I was so miserable that I wasn't gonna do that, so I said I'd start a new chapter when I turned forty. And I've just been putting the work in, you know, whatever I can do, you know, I'm not sure totally where this platform is gonna go, but it's definitely gonna be focused on empowerment, talking about law, talking about, you know, trending topics, everything, whatever God, you know, whatever direction, but we definitely gonna be talking about cops and um, unlawful arrests and killing all types of, that's what I'm kinda into, I'm gonna always try to teach and inform and have fun, so just support me along the process, I thank you, if y'all have any ideas, cause y'all know my personality, shoot them off at me, I don't have a problem, cause y'all probably give me a suggestion today, in a couple of weeks, I'll be like yo, alright, this what I got, you know, this what I got from what you gave me, this what we got, let's, let's put this, this work in, you know, so I appreciate you guys, cause a lot of you in the background been helping me. We all, all my people in the background, we've been falling back, we've been tired, but we here for it, I'm here for you, see I ain't gonna never give up on y'all. Alright, we like fifteen minutes late, let's go, can we get an announcement babies? Oh. I know this off topic, but let me know what y'all think about this segregation thing, seriously. Y'all know, y'all know, that's a, I don't even think it's a touchy topic to talk about, because it's laughable at this point. Told you, our cousins don't even wanna separate, you got, you got, our white people, they're like, segregation, segregation, what the hell are you talking about? So, I'm definitely glad that all of this stuff is coming to the forefront, we can talk about difficult topics, you see what I'm saying? Put whatever's out there and we know what's what, and we move forward, and the people supposed to be together, be together. Yeah, that segregation thing, I got a video to put out y'all too. I don't even know why they take Trump serious, no disrespect for the people who voted for him. Look at my baby over here, why she so furrowed, she okay? Oh, you know what guys, I'm gonna be honest, I have paid attention to a few content creators and I know, but I, you know who, who I, I liked they, they, what they been talking about different stuff? Um, Martin G. I do, I like him, he don't get a lot of views, but I like the fact that he talk about different stuff and he was talking about gaming and the kids, I've been talking about that for a while, kids done lost our mind and they lost, they lost, no, they lost they mind and made us lost our mind as parents, but that is some of the things we have to address. So shout out to Martin G, I liked that, I know he ain't get a lot of views, but that's up my alley, I like that type of stuff. Oh yeah, also I shared in a community page, y'all know, I just share the truth, um, Trina quote, somebody got unallowed by adults and police in the middle of a robbery or something, again, and you know, I don't condone violence, I don't condone the street stuff, but I do condone our police knowing how to do stuff and it's pretty consistent that adults and police thinks shooting first is, is okay, so just be aware of that, cause it looked like it was daytime. You know, and if they have people like Officer Perez that's just shooting buck wild, anybody can be, you know, harmed by that. So definitely uh, talk to your elected officials about it, it's still going down and um, I'll look into it to see who they did it to. Some people try to disregard it, cause they like, oh, he was a criminal, he was robbing. That's understandable, but that don't mean that the cops get to be the judge and the jury, that's the issue, so let's keep our eyes on that. There's gonna be some good times in this next couple of years. Ooh, you know what I want to say too, cause I'm just chit chatting with y'all, I noticed people who was really like, like the black Republicans, I'm have to talk shit, mhm. They um, made videos talking about yeah, D E I gotta go and all this stuff just really being like weird, and then when this segregation thing come, oh they quiet is all hell. I feel bad for them, you got tricked. Mm-hmm, some of your favorite content creators, very, very, very conservative and now they quiet about the segregation. See, that's why you gotta know your candidate and not fall for the hoopla, you know, get to the essence of the person, look at their history, don't just throw their history in the garbage. You see what I'm saying, you gotta pay attention to all that, how they treating you. And as I say that, I never pulled up the um, Napoleon thing, they sick in Napoleon. Being a no show. Alright, let's see, we about to start.
Good evening everyone, this is the meeting of board trustees, date is March twenty-fifth at six twenty-four P M. I will call them all. Trustee Gonzalez, trustee Gray Everett, trustee Weedman, trustee Carolina, supervisor Hager. Can we stand for the uh, pledge of allegiance? Since the supervisor's not here, we need to uh, vote in a supervised approach. Thank you. Trustee Carolina? Trustee Weedman? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee, can we ever, supervisor Hager, motion passed.
Thank you, um, next on the agenda, we have public comments.
Vivian Allen? We have, we have three minutes.
Hello everyone, um, I'm gonna be very brief, I just wanted, I'm sorry, I just wanted to come up here and um, give a reminder to everyone that it's very important that we vote in this election for the right person for this job, um, we have election day April first and uh, early vote is going on right now, so we just want to make sure that we get somebody in this seat that can undo the things that Tiffany Hager has done, and thank you trustees for putting everybody in the same room, this is very much appreciated because there's no threat in this building, thank you.
Catherine, this is Catherine Henry.
Hello, my name is Catherine Grandberry, I am a township employee for twelve years. Um, back in July of last year, I was asked to perform at the Taste, which I agreed, Angela asked me to submit a contract slash proposal, I did the same day, okay, um, this was like maybe a month and a half before the actual taste, so she said she can bring it to the board to get approved and everything, so meanwhile, in passing uh, Angela asked her if anybody did they approve, so she said nothing happened, so okay, so we were really excited, me and my band, lady and the gents, we're excited about performing on the same stage as Kiki Wyatt, okay, um, that same day I got, someone asked me to perform at another event, I turned it down because everybody was excited to be on the same stage with Kiki. Okay, so, time passed, we missed the concert, I, I gave up my day, the guys gave up their day, we didn't get to perform, the Monday came around, I was at breakfast, Robert says, hey Trish, we got a check there for you from the Fed, I said, so when was somebody gonna tell me I was performing? This is Monday already, so I said, well, in my contract, I stated that if you all fail to contact me, you should pay me a thousand dollars, okay, so now, since I said that, now we gonna put legal, the legalities in it, I said, I've been performing for the township for many years, for the Taste, for Frank's uh dinners, for the picnics, my band has been performing all the time, I've never had to go through this to get my honey, and I felt like the township slapped me in the face to, to not pay me what I asked in honor of my contract, and to pay Kiki all that money to sing twenty minutes to karaoke tracks if we were gonna sing one hour of live R and B music, that's a slap in my face, township is my family, okay, so I felt that you all could've done better, I didn't come, I've been missing these because there have been other things more priority than what I, what I was asking for, but I feel like, you know, it's time to, come on, do right by me and my band, because they waited as long as I did, and I've been waiting patiently, so if I don't wanna, you know, I know what the township is going through and I'm not trying to start any extra stuff, Lord knows we don't need it, but I would like for you all to honor my contract before the next administration, nobody, I'm sending uh, emails to the uh, trustees, no one is contacting me, time, thank you, can I say this one thing? It's been a long, a long time coming, but I know, change don't come without.
Thank you. You know, it's pretty hard to hear that story, uh, can you hear me?
Yo. She's trying to get her pay, get paid, oh my god, she bust out and started singing.
Much better, yeah, I'm so sorry you're going through that, remember who's at that house though, you know, so it's not just completely on them, I just wanna say, but on the break, ending, so yeah, now, I'm just flabbergasted that Darlene Gray Everett continues to not show up, um, I've heard, is someone keeping an account on how many meetings she's missed, because what really just makes me just angry is how she ridiculed Carmen and trustee Gonzalez a few times, but mostly Carmen who was showing, who was not showing up because she was concerned for her safety, so Darlene has missed how many meetings and has she even given an excuse or a reason why, so you know, she needs to go, um, I'm not, she just needs to go, and it's like I said, it's a slap in the face, that not only she is not showing up, but, but the supervisor, um, this is the last regular board meeting prior to the election, I thought she'd be in here begging um, to vote, uh, she has been making polls as far as being a writing candidate, but at least come and, wait, how do you, I'm just like, I can't even understand how she expects anyone to vote for her, and she's just basically um, abandoned her seat because things didn't go her way, she hasn't been here since she wouldn't allow Stephanie to dial in via Zoom to the meeting, um, speaking of which, is the attorney present, time? Oh, okay, 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 oh, that's good to know, um, because it's always good to get proper guidance and I feel like with Tiffany, when she's not here, we actually get that, so, um, thank you, thank you guys for showing up, let this, you know, let, let the situation be an indication of what you should do between now and next Tuesday, so that's all I wanna say, thank you everyone, have a great night.
I love Nicole, her ad lib, she was like, that ending was funny.
Okay, I'm a, I'm a little bit hoarse, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'll, first off, this is a great set, everything, everything is wonderful, okay, I only got one thing to say, can we put, we, we have to start off with prayer, we do the pledge of allegiance, so please let us, let us have a spot to pray, that's all I'm asking, cause we not gonna get anywhere without God, so if we can say the pledge of allegiance, I know we can pray, so please, put a spot in for prayer, cause with our prayer, we not gonna get anywhere.
That's right.
I, I, now I know I'm telling you, I don't know a whole lot, but I know when, when there's prayer, there's power and you gonna need my prayer.
Amen.
You know what, because I see this administration is gonna have a whole lot of power, okay, that's all.
Good evening, I just wanted to say thank you, thank you for respecting us, um, I appreciate how you have taken the time, especially that last meeting, to explain the different items to us, thank you for respecting us and treating us as though we are adults and we are important and that we are part of this township, um, and the last thing I would integrate on is like she said, let's make sure we get out and vote, you don't just vote, but bring somebody with you, especially if you have children that live in your homes, let's take them with us, that's the only way we're gonna learn something, so make sure you vote, it's early voting, voting is on April first, so let's show up, the building should be bussing out at the scenes at the different polling places, thank you once again for respecting us.
Alright, that concludes uh, public comments, uh, next on the agenda is approval of minutes, there are a motion to approve minutes.
Motion. Trustee Carolina?
Yes.
Trustee Weedman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett, supervisor Hager, motion passed.
Next on the agenda, we have approval of bills, we have a motion to approve general fund bills.
I would like to make a motion to approve a proportion of the bills.
Go ahead girl. Men.
I would like to pay the bills regarding items four through twelve and pay the remaining um, the remaining.
What's four through twelve?
I'll second. That we're taking out?
Yes.
Um, there um, four through nine is for Jimbo's, it was for catering events, for events that we didn't approve, and then ten, eleven, twelve was for Southland, RC and Communications, which a lot of those things were not in compliance with the image ordinance, so these are previous things we've taken out before, it's just a year ago, so we're taking them out again.
Right, yeah, we can save them. Jimbo.
Trustee Carolina?
Yes.
Trustee Weedman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Everett, supervisor Hager, motion passed.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the general assistance fund bills?
Um, I would like to make a motion uh, to pay the general fund bills excluding item one through six, which are credit card bills for Clicks Inn, um, again, these are things that we've taken out before, they just didn't come in compliance with the image ordinance and so we're taking them out.
I'll second.
That must be Tiffany's little boards.
Trustee Carolina?
Yes.
Trustee Weedman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, supervisor Protip, Dallas?
Yes.
Um, trustee Gray Everett, supervisor Hager, motion passed.
Supervisor hanging, motion pass.
Right, uh, voting bridge fund bills, there's a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. Second. Second.
Right, motion second called.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Wedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Ever? Supervisor hanging, uh, super, I mean, super pro ten Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Next item is new business. Next item would be resolutions, proclamations and ordinances. Uh, item as well. Next on the agenda, we have new business. Uh, item A is request proposal for IT services. There's a motion.
I'll make a motion. Uh, I'll send it for discussion purposes.
Discussion, yeah.
So I just have some questions, I don't, I saw them out here earlier. I just have questions regarding what this is for. I mean, I don't, there was no proposal in there.
Thank you. That's the same thing I said, what is it for? They waste a lot of money on IT the last couple of years. And you guys have to think, if the IT, any IT is connected to Kiki, Freeman.
Hey Leah, I just have some questions about the proposal for the IT services that is on the agenda.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Cause of the agenda, I'm sure everyone's the same, but it's not even, I ain't detailed anything. Okay.
Thank you. I have another question.
There's a motion in second.
Call them to approve? So now, I'm not, we don't want to play it off. We have to let her come over.
Yeah, that was a motion in second, unless somebody wants to change it, we still vote. Just a little later.
Yeah, okay.
Trustee Carroll? No.
Thank you.
Trustee Wedeman?
No.
Supervisor pro ten Gonzalez?
No.
Motion fail.
Right, next on the agenda, we have closed session. Do you have a five to go under for closed session?
I'll make a motion to go to closed session. To discuss prior discipline, performance, compensation and the dismissal of certain personnel, legal counsel, acquisition of property, matters pending, pro, pro goal or imminent litigation pursuant to section two C one of the open meeting act related to the employment or dis却ment of specific employees.
I'll send it.
Trustee, uh, Wedeman?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Supervisor pro ten Gonzalez?
Yes.
Well, six forty-one, we're going into closed session.
Alright y'all, we don't have this playing in the background, but y'all heard what they said. I'm really thinking that is hunt. I'm thinking that is hunt. But my, um, honeymoon not here to put the eight ball in the chat for me. You guys heard me, I said that IT is questionable. We saw it too many times over the last couple of years in township's budget. That was ridiculous. I mean, sometimes they say five hundred thousand, fifty thousand, it was in different sections. And I'm like, how many different sections can IT fall under? So I'm glad that Stephanie Wedeman actually asked those questions because that's some of the things that we have to ask. So if honeymoon was here, she would have put the eight ball in there for me. Because y'all already know, God be the glory, we a little channel, but we call out the shit. So this is what I wanted to call out too, or I have to put that out there. And this is no disrespect to no one, but do y'all remember this clip? They put it inside of Thornton, Thornton, Dalton? Was it Dalton Politics? This was a day ago, didn't get many likes, but it's a reason why. Because the names that, that Trina Nate made people uncomfortable. But we, it doesn't matter. Because I love, I got love for Wedeman. But everybody, everybody, everybody needs to be bonded. Listen to this, Ms. Trina calling it out again.
If, so. If anybody grabs me while I'm speaking, I'll call the attorney general for a violation or intimidation and harassment. Out of the way.
Oh, no.
So I want everybody to make this make sense to me. You're concerned about this spending at Thornton Township. You're trying to put her on a credit card that she does not want. Why would you do that? Also, she has a three thousand dollar, right? She can write as many three thousand dollar checks as she wants with no cap here in Thornton Township. Why hasn't anyone created an ordinance to stop that? Or limit the amount of checks? That's the same thing that goes on in Dalton. She can write as many five thousand dollar checks as she wants without board approval. Just like here, she can write as many three thousand dollar denomination checks as she wants without board approval. So why haven't you guys done anything to cap that? Carmen, I'm glad you spoke, because you spoke about, um, the supervisor being bonded and us having nothing to worry about. Seeing that you have a background that's been posted, um, numerous times in check fraud as well.
Ooh, I'm just, listen, I'm just here to broadcast. I was like, woo. This is my grandma, her Haitian ass, she'd be like, something, she'd do something, her fingers be snapping, woo, that's hot.
Plus, a key freedom habit, a felony background. You two should be bonded as well for the protection of Thornton Township. Anybody with a criminal background should be bonded in any municipal job that you're in. And she's bonded. Can you hear them say she's bonded? I'm asking for all criminals to be bonded. Thank you so much. Now, furthermore, furthermore. Okay, now, the board wants proper spending to be made. You guys tabled the budget, but for four months, from April to August, you had substantial amount of time to take out whatever you need to take out of the budget and have this budget passed. You cannot control spending if you don't, if you don't have a budget. How do you do that? How do you know what's gonna be allowed to win?
And I will say this, they controlled the budget by not letting things get passed throughout the meeting. They definitely controlled the budget that way. So everything else, I mean, he, I mean, um, Trina was saying, it's five, it's all five, five. Everybody got a criminal where, everybody. I said, oh shit, and that's what we talking about, we can't pick and choose. And I'm not saying that Wedeman or Carmen or others is gonna go do stuff, but they, everybody needs to be bonded, definitely. Because I think Carmen winked her way off that list. Y'all know I'm gonna keep it real. You know who else winked theirself off that list? Y'all know who else winked theirself off that list? Let me show y'all this, hold up. Can I, um, can I play this for y'all while we on the inter? Ah, is that, that's not it, that's not it. Hold on. I'll play this for y'all, let me see, can I get it on the screen? A few people winked theirself off that list. So I think everybody needs to be bonded. What the hell is this? Is this it? Let me see if this it, y'all. This was on Dalton Politics. Y'all know I be just a little messy, but it's true. Because some of these people are running for positions, so if they running, they better bond that ass. Hold on, wait for it to process real quick. But let, let Trina finish talk her smack real quick while this process.
And you tabled it to an unknown date and time. And Ms. Roberts answered the question to why, um, the Vania Duke lawsuit is against Thornton Township, because that was a Thornton Township sanctioned trick. And for a long time, I've been confused in media because it seems like that was a Dalton sanctioned trick. So all of this, um, co-mencing the government, co-mingling, co-mencing, how the right choose to state it, right? And you guys have a lot to say about how she.
I'm just saying, oh, oh, hold on. Um, where's my download at? I'm really trying to find it real quick. Let me see if this it.
I'm taking you back.
Somebody was messy today, so I was like, fuck it, let me just get down on a little bit of this mess. Y'all guys gotta be careful because everybody did a little bit of dirt. Look at this. Shh, hey, check it out, y'all, this ridiculous. Alright, fair use. Everybody needs to be bonded. That's all her goons. Everybody. Look at Stan. Oh. Wait, 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 wait. This the best. Oh, two more minutes. Hold on, wait, wait, wait. Is that was the inspectors in this? This is all the Tiffany peoples. Now, if y'all love them today, y'all better make sure they bonded. We got two more minutes of this? Do we got two more minutes? I'm so dead, look at him. He can't even lift his damn feet. Look at this fool right here. Let me keep my eye on the meeting, guys, while y'all party out with Tiffany and her goons real quick. It didn't start yet, y'all. Alright, y'all. That's enough, I wore it to the limit. Um, I'm gonna put the original creator, I forgot who video I done stole that from. I got it in my, um, email. I'm gonna put the original content creator on the screen. But y'all saw, y'all saw all of that. Hold up, all of that, and I ain't, I ain't being funny, it's a little messy. But everybody needs to be bonded. Do you got people in there still in positions and running for positions? Am I lying or am I fly? Look, y'all, let me show y'all this. Let's put, who running for Thornton Township positions? So you guys will know while we still waiting. They still in closed session, y'all, I got my eyes on the prize. They still in closed session, let's just look at this real quick. Napoleon, oh, this Nate, ooh, my bad. Nate, like, don't disrespect me. Nate, noble spirit, approachable, titaniumish, this, titanium, I'm saying it wrong. And entrepreneur, shout out to Nate, okay? Nate is still running by himself. Here goes, who's running with Dalton Democrats? This is Dalton, um, Democrat endorsement ballot. Napoleon is at the top of the ticket. And I don't think many people are feeling Napoleon, but I'm gonna shut the hell up. Everybody else getting this ticket, they okay with. Napoleon, where you at? Who you with? Where you been? So this is another, um, person that's running for trustee in Thornton Township, Ms. Keisha Richardson. Um, like I said, I had a brief encounter with her. You know, she's just trying to get the word out. She says she's been out there, you know, doing things, getting the word out, talking to people. You know, she, like she said, it's been hard because anytime anyone comes out and gets a candidate that they like, it is like, five. And she like, can't really deal with all of the hate. But she's doing good, you know, um, I don't, um, I have not looked at what she's running on, but we're gonna check it out before April the first, okay? Um, she's running for Thornton Township trustee. And you do know, also, um, you have Mary Avant that's running for Thornton trustee. I don't have a picture right now, but you know I love Ms. Mary, don't forget about Ms. Mary. And also, this is Cassandra, this is the assessor. Now, I think this is the same tax assessor that Tiffany broke through hell, if y'all could let me remember. Okay, um, if y'all help me remember. This the one, is this the one she locked out her office? And then stole allegedly? Stole people information off of her desk when she came back, the paperwork was done? Uh huh, uh huh, so she's running for, uh, assessor again. Um, Brittany Norwood, is that, just let me know. Or it was another assessor, but she's running, Cassandra's running. Just clarify that statement for me, the other assessor went through hell, if it's another lady. Tiffany, that lady was over it. She was like, I'm not working from home, I'm working in my office. Took a key, changed the lock, y'all remember all of that? So this is a service that, um, is sponsored by Brittany and Ms. Cassandra. Ensure you are claiming all of your taxes and. Check it out, y'all, because, I mean, if you're rich, I think people usually do itemize taxes. But I'm be honest, even with me and my business, I just take the standard deductions because I don't have that much write-off. But it is good to know about write-offs, okay? Especially if you in big business, okay? It'll help you save a lot of money. As of right now, this is my opinion, I do believe Nate is the best choice. That's just my opinion, little bit of loving. He's the same like a sweet guy, he seems like very intelligent to me. Um, and, um, yeah. Impressionable, that's why he needs the right people around him. And that's why I really think that people need to embrace him, the right people. You know what I'm saying? If he gets chosen, someone was like, um, Napoleon gonna win, but Nate probably get a position because Napoleon busy, Napoleon need to sit down if he too damn busy. Uh huh, so this is a Republican candidate, Tim DeYoung, for Thornton Township Highway Commissioner. Uh, he's gonna try to replace that, that guy that be sitting in the corner at the meeting. Everybody, who is that guy? It's like, he kinda like a beer, big belly, blonde haired Caucasian guy. They always ask who he is, so he's trying to take his, his, um, position. Um, y'all know Rose and Bridges though, I'm just gonna give y'all heads up. Rose and Bridges do their damn thing out there, they don't be having no issues in Dalton or Thornton. Whoever running the Rose and Bridges, they said, you ain't touching nothing. They don't touch those accounts, those accounts be getting approved and everything. So Thornton Township School District, so this is what you guys need to pay attention to. I have a deep dive into the school district. I know I started the conversation and I saw a lot of people run down Yellow Big Road with it. Go ahead, down there, follow them, because these people getting paid hundreds of thousands of dollars as you saw at the beginning of the broadcast, ain't nobody with that. Who the hell deserve a half a million dollar, um, income for being on the board? You ain't teaching nobody. You ain't getting your head knocked off by them kids, you ain't getting cursed out by them kids. They ain't gonna set the hell down, so y'all may need to start attending these board meetings. And it's so sad that you don't have honorable people in the position that are actually, won't do shit like give theirself a half a million dollar income. Knowing what is happening on a federal level. That, that each state and county, town, city, they're gonna suffer because the federal budget is relinquished allegedly. You know what I'm saying? I don't understand Trump. How the hell you take the federal budget away and then we supposed to pay federal taxes? Who the, who the, now, black people. Now, you wanna protest because they wanna do segregation, we should do protest them damn taxes. I tell you that, I was like, hey, you wanna segregate, then segregate the fucking taxes. Shit, excuse my, I'm serious. I'm not about to play. Let's get them. The, um, meeting didn't start back yet, they did not come out of closed session. I pray that they do. Hopefully, they come out with somebody that is gonna get fired today. They did that dance. They did that dance. I had to play that, I know that got people on people nervous, but that's the truth. Y'all know y'all gonna get hit with the hard facts here. I love everybody, but it's about the people being protected. Remember, guys, y'all can do more than just vote. Y'all gotta go out there, create programs, y'all gotta go out there, put your voice out there. They create, create things, create ideas, you know, talk to your community about your specialty. Don't just think that it's just voting. Once you get yourself out there, then you gonna wanna be part of it. I, don't be surprised that you see a few people in this fight with Dalton and Thornton, that they end up getting positions. I ain't gonna be surprised. I think Ms. Valerie, um, what, Ms., what's her name? Vivian. Yeah, I think Vivian, they, I don't know, I just think she's setting up for something. Like they trying to sell something. You know how it go? I'm just, I just, I don't know why it came to my head. Hey, hopefully it's not an eight ball. But whoever they put in positions to run boards, committees, one, they need to be, to have emotional intelligence. Two, they need to be non-mised. Three, they need to know what the hell they doing and what they talking about. Just because you somebody friend don't mean you need the position. That's where all this nepotism come from, that's why we in the situation we in now, in our system. Not just in the black, black sector. That happens, that's why Trump, all nepotism. That's why we got Elon. That's why we got these, uh, doge team that's supposed to be young idiots allegedly. Tech hot heads, yeah. Many hackers. And they are in charge of audit in America. How is that happening? Because nepotism. So we really gotta keep our hands on it. And they coming back, y'all. So I'm gonna shut my mouth, I appreciate you guys sticking it, sticking it in here with me. We gonna see who get fired, I hope somebody, I hope it's, I hope it's fun. You guys get y'all coffee, I'm about to get my, warm up my tea. There we go. What, what just happened? What, the vehicle? I don't understand that.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Proof of settlement agreement. Bella Green versus Thornton Township and Tiffany Hanyer. They're proving a settlement. So she got her, um, got her settlement, yeah. I think that's proprietary. Do you have one? Chrissy Gonzalez, you're the supervisor.
You're supervisor.
All I wanna say is, uh, very quickly, and you guys kind of stole my thunder already, but I agree 100%. So I just don't forgive me, I have an election coming up. The early voting is going on present, uh, clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, how is it I believe, um, everything is open till 7:00 PM? Or is that everywhere, or just like I said, Cal State? I'm, I'm with Cal State, you know that the times are-
Yes, everywhere now.
And then Saturday and Sunday as well, I, different hours, but, uh, so right up until Election Day.
What happened with the, with the stipend? I don't know, I don't even understand.
There's a sheet of the times by the press office, if you'd like to have, um, the sheet of where the phone requests are and, um, locations at the time.
Right, next is adjournment, uh, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Kendall. Mr. Kendall, Big Al wants to talk.
Hello, yeah, so your order is on point. I was only ready to adopt, I want to thank you everyone. I would like to thank you, uh, for bringing, uh, a few moments of your time. I wanted to remind everyone that we do have a historic job fair. It's going to be, uh, hospital hiring hires. We have over 60 employers that will be down to call my house. And they hired on the spot. And we're looking for those all over Cook County who interested in jobs in order to run until five. But not only jobs for careers. Because for the Chicago Cook County Departmentship, we work to develop careers. And they're just trying to get you the job, trying to help you develop.
Nice.
So do you have a crumb snatcher at home?
Not a crumb snatcher.
If you interview, they start in that process. I will give you my, um, cell number for those who are listening, so you can follow up, whether it be, uh, trying to be, uh, a little commercial. So we do have a solar panel for your home.
That's what I'm interested in.
At the, uh, Cook County Board of Presidents and the Board of Commissioners, our number is 313-434-3851. I'll send you the link, you can go over the details and apply. President Frandwick on the Board of Commissioners, they have allotted over $50 million to address youth violence and wraparound services across Cook County. So therefore, it's $20 million in intervention, dollars grants that school districts, nonprofits can apply for, township, they can get their groups to apply for. Again, send me the text, I'll send you the link. Then there's $10 million in wraparound services to redo, we consider this across Cook County. So it's important that people who are involved in this apply. Again, it's only for the bourbon cook. It's only for the bourbon cook. The other is, the last thing, well, both of the two most important things that I wanted to, uh, make sure to apply for. And if you send me a text, I'll send you the other one. Because for park districts and people involved in creative arts, there is a art placement grant that awards from 50 to 250,000 dollars to individuals that are creating, creating spaces that the community can use. And so, kind of, the president and, uh, board commissioners have awarded these dollars for those who are involved in the arts, to create safe spaces and spaces that will be permanent throughout all of Cook County. So your groups can work together elaborately on these places. But again, you send me the text, I'll send you the link. And one of the webinars tomorrow afternoon, so you wanna send me the text tonight, so I can text you the detailed information if you can follow up.
When's the job fair?
The job fair is on April the 5th.
Thank you.
But I will also send that, also as in the text as well.
Thank you.
Now, I, I guess you guys passed the, um, the CPG and the Invest in Cook grant. And we have been honored to work with the, well, I had to make sure that you guys got it in. If you guys didn't get it in, it should pass last week. And so we'll try and, um, be helpful to the township of those two. Invest in Cook is President Frandwick's program, I'll put it out over, um, $20 million all over the Bourbon Cook to help do potholes and other improvement and infrastructure dollars. But I'll come back another time.
We definitely need that out here. Thanks, Big Al. Okay, here it is. I wanna talk to this guy up, up this right here. See, the hour, that's wild. Right, right. Hi, can I ask you a little bit about this program? Okay, thank you. Oh, you guys just wanna get, because sometimes the background noise is a little loud. So what is this exactly? This, yeah.
First off, my name is Anthony Travis, AKA The Tax Doctor.
Okay.
I had stolen opportunities to serve or to govern the tax for the property tax rate.
Okay.
And how did that came, citizen of our reported state of Illinois. And we just have to help pay. Our job-
Can you step over here a little? I'm sorry, it can get really noisy and people can't hear, and I don't want this information going to waste. Sorry, okay, thank you. Mmm, oh my gosh. Yes. That's major. Eight hun, consolidate the school district from 856? Wow, 50 countywide, so from 800 to 50? So that's really consolidation, okay, okay.
Illinois University did a white paper for school consolidation. And on page four of their white paper, we found out that Illinois has 12 countywide school districts already. So what we said, since we already got 12-
Why not 13? Oh, 38, right, okay. Got it.
Now, understand this, though. We have a million nine hundred thousand students. 856 school districts. And when you compare us to Florida, they have 2,838,000 students. And they only got 70 school districts.
Right, right. So it's doable, is what you're saying, right? Interesting. Okay.
Florida has 20 million people, 69 counties. We got, what, 12 million people? A hundred and two counties.
That's too many.
97 of the 102 lost population. Why do we need a 102 county?
Babe Solo, hold on, I'm sorry, why do we?
Okay, we wanna cut the counties down to 50. We wanna cut, see my button, folks? See that button?
Hold on, what does that say? Fight, waste, okay? And, and basically, that's gonna push this initiative of, 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 of taking the, um, cut, the property taxes out of the school. Okay.
Off your back, off your neck.
That's major.
Put it in the hands of the legislature.
Okay.
The general fund should be paying, educate our children like Hawaii, Michigan, California, and Indiana. They use the general fund. Why you think their property taxes is so low?
Exactly. And that's what we need, because that, they're, they're killing us on those school property taxes, or school ta- Our property taxes are being eaten alive by the school districts, yes. Mmm, okay.
My name is Anthony Travis.
Anthony Travis.
I'm the tax doctor, and I love taxes.
Okay.
My number one obligation is to the taxpayer, and then to our children.
Thank you.
Without the taxpayer, we don't have nothing.
Right. And thank you, thank you so, and thank you for your service. I see that you're a veteran, Vietnam era. Thank you so very much, and thank you for all that you're doing, you know, in this, I really appreciate it. Yes. I know, I know, and that's so unfortunate. Yeah, right. Right.
We wanna put an end to taxes.
Okay. You're very welcome, thank you.
Hey, baby, how you doing?
I'm gonna stop right there because that was some very pertinent information. If you would like to see the rest of her live, I think she's tuning out, but check it out. Now, I just wanna say a few things about what he said, that's a, whoa, that's mind blowing. He said 73% of the taxes in Dalton, Thornton, and Cook County goes to the school districts. He said I got 850 school districts in the state of Illinois. That's ridiculous. And they wanna consolidate it to 50, which makes sense, okay? It, it is doable. But we have to remember the people who are in those position, if it is consolidated, it has to be honorable because there'll be over a big portion of different school districts that was considered school districts. So that means that the money allocated to each 50 school district, if they were able to consolidate it, it would be more. It would equal to or about what they're spending now if they get, if they don't get everybody on the same page. And that may be the best idea to consolidate because you can get more of the school districts on the same page. Instead of having certain programs here that's not allowed, that's not allocated here because the budget, you'll have more school districts that'll be able to offer like reading programs, after school programs, programs to help find out learning disorders, test-taking program, you know, programs to help get people prepared for college, job finding programs. It was good that they brought up actually the job fair that I brought up. It's so crazy, because I just be looking for stuff and I be like, alright, we gonna talk about that. And it kinda all coincide. So that was the job fair that I did show you guys, and it was hosted under Cook County. So it do sound like Cook County is taking an initiative to work more with Thornton Township. You know, um, in Dalton, you know, offering services, highlighting that I assumed that these, that's why I was looking up, that these, um, counties in Thornton Township fall under Cook County. There is some type of alliance or umbrella because, you know, these cases that's filed against, in Thornton Township, and some of them for Dalton, against Tiffany are filed in the Cook County Court only. You see what I'm saying? So with that goes to say, it seems like they're handing out a hand of extension to the residents. And you guys should utilize the services. But you do have to remember that y'all need y'all own specialized services, especially if y'all gonna still have this Thornton Township thing. People were talking about ripping the whole concept of Thornton Township apart. But if y'all gonna have these things as far as services, the services need to be allocated properly. Because it just don't make no sense, we gotta have millions of dollars that's allocated to you guys from the government or wherever taxpayers. And then you still need outside sources to give you services, like, what's going on here? He did say something that was amazing, though. He did say that, um, and we can look this up, that other townships and counties and other states, they actually use the general fund to fund the schools. So they, or a portion of that money, that's great because general funds, it all just goes into the government and, you know, paying certain things and, excuse me, hold on one second, y'all. Making it through, we making it to our point, excuse me, y'all, throat getting dry. But, well, like I was saying, they said that they use general funds, and that's a great idea. Maybe that'll stop some of the waste and abuse. And that's where the double talk come in. That's where you have people like, yeah, Trump is doing what he gotta do, getting what, rid of waste and abuse. It is a lot of waste and abuse throughout all of our governments. And I do think that it should be steps, like what they're talking about, coming together with coalitions to reframe that, rethink that. And that is done through the people coming up with those ideas. You know, he's not a government official, he's a regular resident, you know, that has a specialty that's able to put something together and present it to the right people and say- that's able to put something together and present it to the right people and say, hey, we may need to consolidate these school boards. And with that goes to say, he got people that's starting to support him. So, that is great, and that's a primary example of the people doing their thing on their own. He's like, I'm a tax expert, everything taxes I love. He like me. It's like, I'm the legal research person, everything legal research, Grace Leiva loves. Like, we all got our own thing we love. We all geeky and shit. So anyway, with that goes to say, we're under the two-hour mark. I'm gonna take a forty-five-minute breaks, if you guys have the stamina. It's gonna be nine fifteen, my time. That's an hour from now. I'm gonna come back with my Tiffany Hinger deep dive, the business slash real estate guru, baby. So we did, I did a, I did a breakdown of all of her properties from two thousand and twenty all the way till now, and what happened with them. Did I see a little bit of fraud? Did I see some bullshit? And I do have some questions about some stuff about urban development. If someone in Dalton could tell me about the urban development out there and Tiffany connections. Until an hour from now, I want you guys to hit the like button, and I wanna say thank you for being here with Grace Leiva. Y'all don't know how much this means to me. It's been a hard role, but we still moving forward, and I'm grateful for you. Um, again, I have some in-person events coming up. It is for economic development in Georgia, in Atlanta, dog. I'm gonna be right in the hood, where I love to be, Fulton County, baby. Right in the middle of Mechanicsville. Pray for me, y'all, 'cause they starting the gang war out here. Mm-hmm, I'm gonna end off with that. Y'all, if y'all didn't watch, I did a little special on Woody. Woody was from YSL, one of the people who were, um, forced to testify. And I said what was happening, what was happening with that whole situation, they were letting each gang people out. And I said about summertime, it's gonna be a gang war again. And damn if it's a gang war that's starting in the area. So I will be in the hood, you know, God protect me, but that's where it's at. Just know that Grace Leiva is not here just talking. The same energy that I'm putting into Dalton, I'm putting into my community the best way I could. So I'll see you guys in about an hour. Hit the like button. Until then, we wanna look, this what Tiffany gotta say to your ass. Hi, this is Super Mayor Tiffany A. Hinger, the people's mayor. So, you guys doing a lot of snitching, and y'all.
I'm taking you back. Here's another one.
How's the money, y'all? There's poor people around.